Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I would like if would Mr. Manning would lead us in prayer and he has a prayer list that he would like to read also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In our prayer request for this month, let's remember Randy Bush's mother, she's a, she passed away, and Rachel Kelly's husband has Rocky Mountain spotted fever, let's remember him. Let's remember the family of the late Mrs. Mary Ruth Bowles, she was a former teacher and central office employee here. A GHS student had a four-wheel accident, let's remember that one. And let's remember all of those students and teachers actually turning to school. Let's remember Daniel Clyer, he's got some medical issues, and Ed Willmore. And let's all be in special prayer for Joe Taylor as he heads back to the doctor this week to find out some great news. So let's remember him in our prayer. So anybody else like to add anything to a prayer request?
Yes, sir. I wish we could continue to keep my mother.
Scotty Lewis's mother.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Ah, definitely, let's go to the board of prayer. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, thank you for the blessings that you have given us. Thank you for the opportunity, Lord, to come here tonight. Lord, heaven and father, be with us, board, as we make the decisions that we need to make, Lord, heaven and father. We will pray for every one of these prayer requests, Lord, that I've mentioned, Lord, heaven and father, Lord, that you'll touch each need of each one of them, Lord. Thank you for all the blessings that you've given us, Lord, in Jesus's name, I pray. Amen.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, in the physical, liberty, and justice for all. We'll try to get to this as quick as possible, we've got quite a bit to do tonight. First thing will be our consent items. Four minutes. Do I have a motion? Everybody's having a chance, I guess, to go over their four packets thoroughly. Do I have a motion on the four minutes?
I'll make a motion, we approve all three of the consent items.
Okay, that works.
I'll second that.
Okay. Have any discussion on these things?
I think this is one of the smallest consent items we've had in a while.
Yes, it is, yes. So, any questions or anybody want to pull any more discussion? If not, the, all in favor?
Aha.
Close. Superintendent's actions. I guess you've all, did they add anything, questions you got on the superintendent's actions? Now we're gonna go to new business A. Policy amendments, six point three one three code of conduct, K through six, and six point three one three one code of conduct, seven through twelve. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Discussions? All in favor?
Aha.
Close. Okay, the second one is where we had quite a bit of paperwork on, it's TSBAs policy recommendations. The, some of these are some that's had to do with COVID that we've had to remove, some have been changed the language on. Do, I don't know anything really what you do about any of these right here, do I have a motion on them?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on them?
What about on one of the, I've got several new businesses B, is all of them the same way?
Yes, it's all the policies.
Oh, those are, I don't see a page number. It's about emergency closes that propose it be the last page of the new business.
Why are you talking about on the TSBA policy recommendations?
Yeah, last page of the proposed business B. It's the first paragraph. The board authorizes director schools to close schools in event of hazardous weather or public health emergency, or any other emergency which presents a threat to the safety of students, staff, members, or school property. You found that, yeah, last page?
I'm still digging through that, I'm reading. Still the last page?
Yeah, it's, it's the call to propose.
First policy under, under new business, is the very first one?
Yeah. The next page is current, but this is proposed, it'll be the last page.
Yes.
Not a page number, can you kind of?
No, I think, yeah, there it is.
Now, what is your?
The first paragraph.
Okay, now what is your, what's your question?
The first paragraph, does that, does that give a director the right, if he so deems necessary, if it's COVID, that he can close schools with COVID without the board approving of it?
Yes.
So one individual gets the right to do that?
It's what the policy says.
Is that from the state?
Well, that's, yes, sir, that's the state law.
Do we have to adopt that part of it? Do we have to adopt that part of it?
Sure.
If the board decides, all I'm getting at is, to me, that's a lot of weight that I feel like the board ought to have some say-so in it instead of just...
Well, and you, and you would, because the board controls the school calendar. These are emergency closures that would happen, like in the event of snow, in the event of an outbreak or something along those lines. As you recall before we started last academic year, the board had to, you know, decide whether to go back and adjust the calendar. So you would, in that scenario, you would, if it's an emergency situation, that is the director who doesn't have time to...
So how long could the schools be closed during that mandate if he decided that we got a COVID outbreak and, I mean, because we did that last year, didn't we? We had different counties, some be closed, some be open, and, I mean, I'm not saying that again, that's just, I'm just wondering, why can't the board have more say-so than just what we're having right here?
Well, let me say this, Jamie, if I'm wrong, this, this is not, that's not the intention of this, even though he gives the power, that, I can't speak for somebody else, I'm not going to close school day without the board approval, okay? I'm giving it and saying it, but this is more designed if there was a tornado, if there were hurricane, we had a fire, some crash, that's, that's, it might not a good way, I guess.
Yes, I mean, Mr. Cullen, anything that would affect the school calendar, your 180 days would have to have.
For work.
So, you're, you're allowed so many snow days, so many days a year that he can utilize for that.
Right, that's, I understand.
If you think beyond that, the person, I will answer that.
Okay.
So you do have some control, it could be an indefinite thing.
Yeah. So that, you see what I'm saying, Ricky?
Yeah, I understand what, I see where you're coming with that, putting that up, but it also, I know he, me as being chairman, he's gonna call me and say, hey, you know, we got this going on, and he and I will discuss it before he makes a decision on it. And whoever the chairman is in that, if that ever came up, he and the chairman will discuss it, it won't be just put on him.
And that, that wouldn't be something that, if you're doing any kind of extensive days, that, I don't even think that would be that, you said, that wouldn't be anything if you're changing the school calendar, correct, Jamie? This is more designed for, like, tonight, there's a thunder, they were defeated, a tornado, nothing out there, nobody didn't know it, I mean...
So that, all I'm getting at is, we, we can keep the schools, it wouldn't be just a closing because...
Now, I think you would have to, he'd have to get under something, if it got into that situation, which we're talking something catastrophic.
Right.
And, yeah, I think at that point, there would be a special call for a meeting.
Or what happened.
You know, we don't, they would have to be...
You're making the school calendar.
And then we would get into that, and that's just like, like he said, if a tornado went through, was going through defeated, and he's decided to close defeated school for that particular item, and it, and they did hit defeated school and flattened it completely, then there would be a special call meeting on how to deal with, the board would have to figure out how to deal with, he would have recommendations on how to deal with what we're gonna do with these kids if this happened.
So what is the phrase, a public health emergency, what would that be, Chairman, or what would that be?
A tornado, snow.
A health emergency don't have to be...
Health could be that, it was flu, or...
Flu? Flu, did you say flu?
Flu, COVID, I mean, if it got serious enough, illness, weather, something like that.
And it's, it's been done in packs, I mean, who works for flu? Yeah, for flu, or anything like that, yes, he has, you know, he has a discretion, you know, to do that, and that's what that's for.
Mr. Smith, remind me how many snow days are traditionally given?
We're getting like ten, we're able to extra, we'll get the thirteen that we flexible with how we need it.
So he's limited by the state without getting a waiver from the Department of Education, I believe, to extend it.
Well, I wasn't aware of that, Chairman.
And even those days, like, if it comes, we gotta call, get special permission, we gotta go, we should file rating warrants in there, and for him to get any extensive over a day or two, anything out of the norm, you gotta do it anyway. But we, like I said, we would do that, I would call, I would set that point, and even the flu, we get to get in, it's not a, it falls on me, but there's a lot of information that goes into that decision, I'd gather doctors, nurses, and...
Alright.
And he, and he doesn't want it to, the full responsibility, he would like some input, you know, from whoever the chairman is to, you know, he's, he's pulling a big deal right here, and he would like, you know, input from whatever, whoever the chairman would be at that time, to discuss them and then, you know, go from there with it, you know?
Okay, alright.
Any more questions? That pretty well answered?
Yes, sir.
You, Marty?
Thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay, no more, let's do a roll call on this, if y'all don't care please. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, we're going on to the third item on the agenda, which for new business is Smith County Student Disciplinary Hearing Authorities, and this is a group of teachers and that are set up each year, I think it's only once a year, though, and it's just if they set up, it's kind of like a board to...
Is it in this one?
Or, yeah, it's in the second, the second book. So, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Ricky, where is this on that now? I didn't, what, what?
Okay, it's under, it's in the second book.
It's in your second book, alright.
And it's under, let's see, what is that?
New business C.
C. And it's right up there, and we'll get it right there, and that gives you your, the people that are involved, co-chairmans and the different peoples involved in.
Alright.
Okay, I got a motion, second, any more discussion on them? All in favor?
Aha.
Out of P is the approval of school fees for all schools. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the school fees for the schools.
Do I have a second?
Second. Is there any, can you have a discussion on them?
Yes, I would, right now, I'll fix it, I think I have, okay, go ahead.
Is that something that I can, you know, that's, that's a real big, that's a touch of subject with me, and I, I just, I was wanting to talk, I don't know, I don't feel, don't want to... Is that something we, how can I discuss that with you, Chairman? I mean, I don't, I don't want to do nothing that I ain't supposed to be talking about, but, what, is there, is there a situation if a kid can't make these fees, what happens there, Chairman, or Director?
There's never a child that...
But what if, just, what would happen?
Well, first of all, if they make this certain guidelines, it's paid for anyway.
School labor.
If they can't.
State labor.
So nobody would know about, I mean, we don't want kids to know the other...
No, they'll legally do.
That's what I meant.
Yes, you couldn't, you're gonna send to anybody, don't know, whichever attempt in the world is made, I, I have two kids and children, I guarantee they don't know whether they're reintroduced or paid for or what's...
So this is done pretty discreetly as far as...
Very discreet.
Get no child, we get a less, your child, regardless what school it is, they get the same thing as every child.
So every kid's gonna get the handbook regardless?
Absolutely.
Now, you'd be discriminatory to him, I think.
Who's second?
Okay, who's second there? Jones?
I've got it.
No, I'm Jones.
Manning was, I got Manning, he's made the motion, and I was like, okay.
Do I have any more discussion on this? Also, I'd like to do a roll call on this, because there's money involved on all this. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Second, yes. Okay, let's go to the special education contract for the twenty-one, twenty-two year. Do I have a motion on that one?
So I move.
Out of second?
Second.
Discussion? If not, this, I will do a roll call on that, money involved, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Second, yes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the quote for approval of copy paper. You've all looked at that, you seen what the bids are? And I assume we will take the low bid on that, is that correct?
Well, let me, I, I think even though...
Well, let me get, let me go ahead and get a motion, then we'll discuss, if that's okay. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second?
Second.
Now, we'll get those discussions.
I think if I understood very correctly today and normal, that maybe both of these have been pulled because, I know Barry told me he couldn't even get one to discuss for the day, the way everything's changed, plus, which I think both of these may have actually, this was good for this thirty days, and may just have did it on case by case, day by day, school was good, because they said they can't lock it in.
No, wait a minute, I've got a question about that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, what you're saying is, whichever one we go with, we would stay with that same vendor, regardless of the price, day by day, per month, a month, or however it may fall, because of the way they're impacted?
Like the gas next month, because they say that it's so volatile right now, they can't lock anything in.
A second question, if y'all don't mind. The first one on the quote there, American paper entwined, has that been bid out of a company that's local to us?
It's next.
Okay.
And has the state bid, or?
I don't think there's a state bid on that particular item, I think it's getting the authority to do that. Barry told me it went up from June the thirtieth to July one, three dollars a case, and he said he couldn't lock anything in, that's what he told me, standing on.
So, we clarify, in times past, it wasn't that problem, it was, it was bid one time and that's it, but now you're saying this might occur each month?
You give us the permission, we'll try to go with that number, once you move it in, but if we're, I may bring you back something, I'm not sure either one of them will honor that today, that's kind of what I admit to ourselves.
But that's the only two bids we received.
Yep.
Well, when we put it out for bid, we did not receive any bids, so we haven't called back for quotes, so this, these are quotes, we have no true bids.
But, are we bidding this for the school year, or just for a month?
But we tried to bid it for the year.
Uh, there's four hundred cases here. Is this four hundred cases?
And we tried to bid it for, for the year, but this, and we tried to bid enough, it would be enough value, we gotta get a lot better deals on that, but I don't think, again, that will honor that price, that just a quote for that particular day, they wouldn't, they wouldn't give us a long-term bid on it.
The last line, no, each quote process may vary from month to month.
Barry didn't even want to hundred percent sure, he wouldn't even honor, I understand it even month to month, he said it's that, what I tell you, it'll be good for a day, so I can get a lot...
But we're not buying paper month to month. We're buying paper trying to be once a year, one time, that's it. I want four hundred cases dropped off here.
Yep.
I ain't buying forty cases, forty cases, forty cases, are we? Aren't we buying a four hundred cases?
We're trying to buy, this was showing...
And this is it, at this price? Not, it don't work that way? You buy four hundred cases and they just drop it off during the course of the year at the price that we bid it?
That's, and they're trying to get to a price, and that's probably half a load or semi-load or box load, I don't know that they bring.
Well, why won't we buy two hundred cases and have it delivered, and in three or four months, bid another two hundred cases? Why don't we do that?
If they do that, that's, I'm saying, that's where we got to saving a lot of money, if I was about two-year girls, we started through, everybody getting it by the semi-load or the half-load, but they, like I said, they, they have to call, even solicit the bids, they don't even turn bids in.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Now, if I'm following you right, Gina, this is not actually a bid, it's just a quote, because they wouldn't give us a bid. So, since we don't actually have a bid, we're voting on a quote, are we tied, if we select between one of the two of those, Mr. Attorney, are we tied to them if they quadruple that price in three months?
No, because they gave you a quote for a month.
Because it's a quote, not a bid, correct?
Correct. They gave you a quote for a month, and even within that month, I think some of them said it could change.
From what he told me after, I don't think that he would even, and I don't want to speak for him and him not here, you know?
I do not blame your organization beyond that.
You see what I'm saying?
But Tommy's saying, we're buying, we buy four.
Right, one, right now, right, I'm gonna deliver it.
Yeah.
Can they?
That's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying.
You're saying four hundred?
Do we have somewhere to store four hundred cases?
No.
That's the...
Do we have somewhere to store two hundred?
We have stores for a hundred, you can buy it every quarter.
We'll find it for a hundred.
Can we, can we store two packs in one sheet?
I mean, instead of bidding this every month, what if we bid it every quarter, and do a hundred cases a quarter?
See where we're standing.
You know, there's places online, Tom, you can order this stuff.
Yeah.
That's what I do at the office.
Uh, suggest that somehow, another, let's make a motion.
We need to back up on our motions, if that's...
Let's suggest that.
Can you, uh...
Do quarterly.
Call them and buy a hundred cases, just cheap as you can buy. Tell them to bring you a hundred cases.
And would it necessarily, wouldn't have to be one of these two?
Yeah.
You can find it somewhere else cheaper, see if you get a hundred cases, and then in a quarter, we'll buy another hundred cases.
Yeah. The buyers on that.
Well, I mean, the prices may drop in a quarter.
That's good, yeah.
Mr. Albert, you back up on your second, and then we'll reach, we'll start this again.
Yeah, I'll respond my second one.
Okay.
Lewis?
Mr. Lewis?
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to...
Now, now, let's start this again. Alright, we're gonna make, the motion is gonna read that we're going to buy one hundred cases now, and each quarter, go back to whoever, who's the cheapest?
Get quotes or bids?
Each quarter.
Each quarter, and buy, and then get quotes, and then bring it back before the board, but agreeable with this, listen, to be bid, I mean, or to be bought in each quarter.
I don't like gas, I don't like heavy gas.
Yes, and, Mr. Nixon, you're saying we can store a hundred cases, or you'll find a place?
We can probably get a, as the books start moving now, it's gonna free up a lot more spaces, so we could probably find two or three pallets.
Some of them should actually go out with the books, to start figuring this out.
As the books move out, and we've got more room.
But wouldn't the paper go with the schools too?
Now, Mr. Wade?
I, I think, my question, and this is what I heard from Mr. McCauley and some others, is give the director the authority to find it as economical as possible, and it's under ten thousand dollars, so he can do that on his own.
And buy a hundred cases.
I think you gave him authority, that you don't see necessarily, I thought what I heard was, that he finds it as economical as possible.
Right, let's go there.
And, and I want you to understand, if it's as volatile as he said, there's numbers that probably changed already.
But tonight, we're having to, we're tied to vote between those two quotes?
No.
No.
These are not bids, these are just quotes.
Yeah, well, I see quotes there.
You don't have to back feed one up and forth, go.
You very well make a motion to authorize the director to find a hundred cases of paper as economical as possible, and even if this map, that's gonna be under, he can do that and bring it back to you, or bring it back to you next morning.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that the board directs Mr. Smith to find a hundred cases of copy paper at the most feasible, cheapest price he can buy, and purchase it, you know, as long as it's under ten thousand dollars.
Cases of copy paper.
Wherever he can find it.
Tommy, I think we'll lock it in as possible.
Well, you could, Marty, but I don't think they're gonna lock, I don't think nobody's gonna lock you in, Eddie.
Mr. Albert, you want?
So you're talking about that?
Second?
Yeah, yeah, he'll go right now, today, tomorrow, bye-bye.
Okay, now, is any more discussion? Mr. McCauley, you alright with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got a motion, second, we're gonna do a roll call. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. McCauley?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Second, yes. Alright. Next item on the agenda is bid approval for repairs at CES, FRS, GES, and GHS. Mr. Nixon, I believe you've got all the bids, and I think we've all got copies of them, but we're gonna, I'm gonna let you up forward it, and tell us what you're doing next.
Uh, you know, some of the, the very back one is the official bid page, and I just sort of condensed it down to what you really need on the front right here. Also, I got the pictures for the schools, showing you what part of the rooms that we're talking about. We're not obligated to do any of them, we can pick and choose, we can do them all. As you can see, Rackley, Porter Roofing, Professional Roofing, are the three people that bid on it, they, these are their bids. Alternates down there, they put GHS, GM Lobby on it, I, I don't know why they bid that also, that was never my intent, we've never had any trouble with that roof, so, if my recognition, I wouldn't even consider that one, but that's up to y'all. The other one down there is just a provision, if they didn't get under there, and there's some decking that they didn't realize, that's just an add-on, which I think we should, is important to do, because it's hard to tell what's under every square foot of that, so that's just a much extra that they may have to use. Looking at that, my opinion, GHS, GM, and GES are definitely need to be done this year. Fort River, Heard Elementary, are the next ones, in my opinion, if you want to do those, there it is, that's entirely up to, that's y'all's decision on that, but GHS, GM, and GES, as you can see what parts we're talking about in the, in the pictures there, they definitely need to do, need to go.
David, just a quick question, Fort River, is that under control up there now?
Uh, of the part that we're talking about here, I mean, we've been patching along...
Locker room and everything else coming out the window and stuff, everybody able to...
Well, that, that, dressing room, talking about, it leads again, would go, but that's under warranty, so, they're addressing it, so, the rest of this has just been patching, but it's just patching so much now, and, you know...
Who is the company that it's under warranty with?
Uh, Rackley will do that.
Have they been good, have they been prompt?
Oh, yeah, I, I, no, I'm not a problem with that at all.
Uh, reasons, I just hate this thing going on there since I've been on this board, it ain't never stopped yet, those maulers, I mean, it's.
Things we have to deal with, but, uh, they work on it, they're pretty, uh, roof fix one put on that one over there, but they're, they're, they're out there within, within the day usually, within twenty-four hours of dressing, there are problems.
Who's that, David, who's out there that quick?
Uh, well, the roof we're talking about, uh, that dressing room at, uh, Fort River with that problem, that ever since.
I know, but who did you say they're out there that quick?
Yeah, uh, roof fix.
Roof fix?
Yeah. Yeah, but they didn't bid on any of these roofs, so, no, no, this, that's just a completely different thing what we're talking about here.
Uh, Mr. Director, do we have the money in our budget that we could do all these projects?
Well, let me.
Yeah, I, I, that's what I want.
David, how, I mean, I says, for how, how, how long, they give you a number, approximately time it's being to be good for?
Uh, no, I, I assume that they're at least thirty days, I would say, yeah, I've not actually read the.
Reason I asked you, Tommy, I, I'd have to go back, we've got so many different budgets going on, I wish we wanted to disagree, but I think we, the reason, put about four hundred and sixty thousand, it got approved in Esther two, which you see where I'm going with this, we'd be pretty close if we accepted the low bid. And I, I feel like this Esther three, but they're really dragging their feet on it. We, we supposed to have had it, had the money on it in April and we ain't even clocks and changes. We have a different webinar every day and it changes, so, yes, I think especially if, we took that, and again, I think, David, do you remember when that the number we put in Esther, it was about four hundred and sixty thousand?
Something like that.
We, we got, originally we could do it a few at a time, but we saw how costly it was, but my recommendation is yes, we could do it, we got the funding, but I think we can do it, it really not cost us anything. That makes any sense, don't you think?
So your recommendation is go ahead and do them all?
Yes, if you, if you take the low bid, but.
If you take the low bid.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with the company to go with?
Yeah, Rackley Local Company, yeah, that's.
The, the Esther two, the way we worded the grant, it made it more efficient for COVID because we got better airflow, because we had better, and they approved that. So, we hadn't seen the money out of it yet and they stand backing up, but it's approved, so I think we didn't have a, I, and don't quote me on it, I'd pull it off, I think it was somewhere around four hundred and sixty thousand originally.
Well, I, I, I'll tell you my opinion on this, y'all, and Marty, you guys as businessmen and we work, things ain't getting cheaper.
Well, that was my next statement I was gonna make.
They're not getting cheaper.
I'd recommend doing it, and they gonna get cheaper.
I would rec, I'd recommend to make a motion that we accept the lowest bid, which is Rackley Roofing, to do all of them.
Do all of them, okay.
I'll make a question.
My question is, is, is the timeframe, you got four projects here, are they, I mean, how long's it gonna take to get these projects done?
I don't know if they, if Rackley intends on doing them all at once or they're gonna do them in step, I, I can't.
I would say, David, them, I'd say it'd be a pretty lengthy, right, I was wondering I asked, because obviously we took the low bid, I'm sure, or took any of the bids, I'm sure they would honor that tonight, but, you know, I was trying to drag their feet, make sure we got our Esther money in, but we had the fund balance and replace it if there was distance left.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You think we could put a stipulation in there that they would do the Fort River first and fix what they got a problem with before we give them all the others to start with?
Well, that's a different company, right?
No, 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 it's all the same. Now, well, if, if, if I can say this.
Yes, sir.
Well, let me say this too, David too has, there's about two that's got to get that.
Lordville High School gym.
We're gonna have a massive damage.
That's what I'm saying, is if we.
If that happens and that gym floor gets wet, it happens over a weekend or something, we don't catch it in time, we gotta put a new gym floor. Now, we insurance may pay for it, but what if it's in the winter time during basketball season?
Two or four projects, but on a stipulation that David does priorities first.
Yeah.
And when you talk to them, tell them that's what you want to do it, if we agree on, do it with them, other words, let them, you go with priority first, not just say, well, I just want, I wanna go and do CES tomorrow, you know, let's do it as priority, well, who needs it to work?
Well, what if, what if they're, what if they're in, up into the spring doing in all of them, do, do, you think that's good to wait that long to get them all done, maybe bid it out to the next cheapest bid and let that guy start on one and?
Rackley's a good-sized company, I mean, they're just not got one or two trucks and a half dozen men, they can get in there and get things done.
You're talking two hundred and one thousand dollars, dude.
So.
Yeah.
I feel like that Rackley can get on it and he'll get the job done, I think. Yeah, 'cause I mean, they're just a huge operation, I mean, they're not, nothing small, so.
Yeah.
And they're local too, I like that, you know, well, it's, 'cause when you trust your money locally possible.
Let's ask a question this way, David, you're doing them every day.
Well, yeah.
It's right, you're playing on the ground. You comfortable that we make it bid, do it all one league, just kind of, you know?
But I'm just saying.
You know what I'm saying? I'm sitting over here as.
I just, I.
You're going, standing over there doing the work.
If they could do them all at once, give a crew to do two roofs at a time.
Or do one and move right to the next.
You have any time, you have any idea, David, how long it take to get this done? Well, compared to what we did at Carthage Elementary and square footage wise, they're pretty comparable to the one we did at Carthage Elementary, I know it's a different company, it's Professional Roofing that did that, they were in and out in two months. And they, and that was a complete tear off.
This, these are tear offs there.
All right, towards Fort Elementary may have some, just.
Yeah, that's great, they have more work than what you're speaking of here.
Oh, yes.
Lot more labor.
Yeah, except for North Elementary, there's, there're probably some tear offs.
Rackley is, if they have a crew, they'll from year to year to year, they'll be, they'll bring in four crews, I mean, that just, would you take that?
That's what I'm, yeah.
Okay, we got a motion and second, any more discussion about this?
Will there be another discussion on this later or is this?
No, this is it.
This is it.
I just want to voice, I just feel like I'd like to see the Fort River area that's been leaked, that's been leaking that Scotty, how long's it been leaking Scotty?
Well, I mean, it'll be, it'll be, he'll do priority.
They're, they're all leaking, so it's not.
Oh, are they?
Yeah, that's the reason we're doing the roofs.
Yeah, two.
Uh, Gordon's Elementary, to be honest with you, is leaking worse than any of them. Gordon's Elementary.
We knew that.
We about, I mean, we need to address Gordon's Elementary right away.